Nailing to order of the Columbia County Planning and Zoning Commission for July 17th, 2025. Please stand for the invocation by Dylan Douglas and the pledge allegiance by Vice Chair Steve.
All your heads in prayer. Our community having. Pray. Cover well and quickly our community. Pray for all the firsters there serving. Well, as all the community. Pray for our first responders. Well. I'd be proud. National leaders.
Please join me in the pledge, please.
And say so. Public apology.
Thank you. I'd like to do a roll call. We do have a quorum with one Commissioner Ryan Cato, District Four absent tonight. Please put your phones on silent for the meeting. Um, Commissioners, you had the agenda for last before you. I just need approval for that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I have a motion. Second, all those in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. I need approval for the agenda this evening.
Chairman, I make a motion to.
Second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries for. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body of the Columbia, of the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variances request tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on August 5th, 2025. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Nixon to obtain a request. Speak for Ms. Nixon's right. Any requests with a public hearing will have a minimum of 10 minutes permitted per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first. Any member of the public may speak after. Their side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. While we're getting into the debate agenda, the new business, preliminary plat. Danielle?
Yes, sir. This is the preliminary plat for the first section of Arden Glen off Baker Place Road. This shows the location of the property on the west side of Baker Place Road and currently zoned planned unit development. This first section includes 102 single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 7,150 square feet and an average lot size of 11,548 square feet, which meets the requirements of the PUD. Setbacks are 25 feet from the front property line and 10 feet from the rear property line. The side setbacks vary a bit depending on the lot size. The larger 70-foot lots do have 10-foot side setbacks, while the narrower lots have seven-and-a-half-foot side setbacks. There is 20.8 acres of open space provided, including the amenity area for the development at the front of the project. A couple of the unique aspects, portions of the 50-foot buffer for this project are on the adjacent property. Written agreement from the property owner to maintain those buffers has been provided. There is also a required pedestrian connection to the retreat at Baker Place, which is just adjacent. That connection is shown on the plans, but it's pending agreement from that adjacent development. We are comfortable with allowing construction on the overall development to proceed while the, that agreement has worked out. But since that is a zoning condition, that will need to be addressed prior to final plat for this section. And staff is recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Any Commissioner comments? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Arden Glen off Baker Place.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. H1A2 Parkway Place.
Yes, sir. This is a preliminary plat for Parkway Place at 1915 Williamview Parkway. This shows the location of the property on the north side of Williamview and currently zoned R2 single-family residential. This development includes 63 single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet and an average lot size of 11,371 square feet, which meets the requirements for the R2 zoning district. The setbacks are 55 feet from the center line of the roads and 10 feet from the side and rear property line. And there are 12 acres of open space in this development. There will be sidewalks and street trees throughout. And there is a requirement for this development to provide sidewalk connection down Williamview Parkway to the Greenway. That is shown on the plans, and that will have to be installed prior to approval of the final plat. And staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Parkway Place at 1915 Williamview Parkway.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. H1B massage operator's license. Will?
Mr. Sheriff's request for massage operator's license for Moves Make LLC. Applicant is Andrew House. A small massage service is only. It's a relocation to 214 Old Evans Road for administrative purposes only. She meets all requirements of the ordinance. Staff recommends approval.
Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for Moves Make LLC to provide mobile massage services.
Motion. Second.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. Public hearing part of the meeting this evening. H1C1 provisional home occupation. Danielle?
Yes, sir. This is a provisional home occupation for Generations Land Co. LLC. And this is located on their properties at 1511 and 1523 Old Appleton Harlem Highway. These properties are located near the intersection of Old Appleton Harlem Highway and Wrightsboro Road and are currently zoned residential agricultural, as are all of the adjacent properties. And this shows the aerial. As you can see, their house is on 1523. The proposed storage area is on 1511. So we are dealing with both of the properties that are under common ownership there. This shows the site plans, which shows the driveway access and the location for the equipment storage. It is screened on all sides by trees, with the exception of the shared driveway side. The applicant's intention is to offer forestry mulching as kind of a part-time business. So they do have a truck and trailer and the skid steer to park there on the property when it's not in use. The truck and trailer are very typical of, you know, equipment you would see in, on these kind of acreage properties anyway. And obviously, the business itself takes place off-site, so there's not a lot of traffic to the site as a result of this business. So there are no particular concerns with this business operating from this location, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Danielle. The owner applicant Jacob Smith would like to add anything to our comments? Do we have any questions? Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Anyone would like to speak against? Have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the provisional home occupation to Generations Land Company LLC at 1511 and 1523 Old Appleton Harlem Highway.
A second.
I have a motion on the floor and second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. H1C2, additional use of a massage. Dylan?
Sir, as you said, this is an application for massage at Columbia Road 15. There's the location of the parcel to the south of Columbia. Section with flowing. This shows the zoning map, that light blue that you see the parcel is colored. That's the planned development. In District, therapeutic massage is a conditional use, zoning district, which requires planning. Review and approval. This is a plat for the property showing which parcel within the. Proposed for this. This is the existing building again. Effectively, this development is a professional office park. Picture of the site from kind of the front of the development. This is the building that's on the next slide. All of this development is pre-existing. No site changes, as usual with therapeutic massage requests. The applicant is the only proposed employee looking to make use of one private room within. This is a picture of the development map. Although this parcel's setback somewhat off the road, it is within that broader professional development filed by the professional. As on the map. Again, with it being a pre-existing development and no external changes to the site that would cause any adverse impact to the surrounding area, staff is comfortable with the request and recommend.
Thank you, Dylan. Would the owner of AAPNAS Properties or the applicant Nicole Coffey would like to add anything? Anyone, anyone in, one would like to speak in favor or against this? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file RZ250701, conditional use for massage at 4210 Columbia Road, Building 15.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, next. File H1, I'm sorry, H1C3, the conditional, change of conditions. Will?
Sheriff's request for a change of conditions on multiple properties at 102 Colonial Road and 303 311 South Beller Road, about 2.8 acres combined, are currently zoned CC, Community Commercial. Change of conditions to allow additional time for conditional use for single-family residential use to remain in place. There's a case of all, all six properties. Excuse me. We're going to be dealing with a variance on this one here in a few. And the zoning of the property, again, was zoned last year, about a year ago. And there is a condition that we'll be talking about in one moment, aerial view of the site. Site itself. So what we're looking at is, when this was approved a year ago, there's a conditional use for, for single-family residential to remain in place. Basically, allow the folks to live there, to live there. There was a request for a time limit on that. Applicant requested five years. They were approved for one year by the Board of Commissioners. They've now come back asking for an additional three years, basically from September of this year, adding three years on to that. On the front end of it, with the original request, staff really had no issues with five years. Commission asked for one, and the three is basically a middle ground in all, in all respects for this, gives additional time for development of the site. Again, they are citing kind of the market, slowness of the market with why they're wanting additional time. Again, it shows the site here. You have existing residential properties there, or residential properties, existing houses. And it shows a plat of the property and the concept plan. So this is the current concept plan. We saw one before that was development of all the, of all the sites here. This is being changed to basically be a new, new retail building here. And this building here we'll be talking about in a few, being redevelopment, being redeveloped using the residential property, or the residential building that's already there. And again, several members approve with that condition for 36 months from the date of approval by the Board of Commissioners, and that includes staff recommendation.
Thank you, Will. There are several owners or the applicant, if you would like to come forward and have anything to add. Do we have any questions?
So how long has this been going on that he's wanted to change this?
Come forward to, please.
So we got rezoned last September.
Okay.
So again, it has a one-year time limit on the conditional use. So that basically is up, I think, middle of September, 119th or something of this year. So once that happens, then the residential properties are not supposed to be there anymore. They're not supposed to be occupied, essentially. Not supposed to be occupied, essentially. So again, it's one that if we were, let's say it goes past that September deadline, the force could go out there and say, hey, you're in violation, and then that starts the whole process of getting people.
So they're currently residents in buildings. Do you own all the buildings?
Oh, sir. I represent Access Real Estate. Applicant.
Say your name and address, please, for the record.
Saj Lakani, three nine five seven Hemmets.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, we're just wanting to extend it for how long?
Three years, thirty-six months.
It's originally a year?
Yep, that's correct.
Our initial request was.
So you hadn't bought the others yet? When?
Sir?
Planning to buy them within the year? Hopefully?
We're working on it, and kind of the economic volatility has taken a little bit more time possibly getting from potential. Still engaged, optimistic. But that's why we had initially five years, because I feel it's very typical.
So in the end, when you get it all done and get it all purchased, you plan on running a retail shopping center kind of from the Oakley Percol down to Colonial, somewhat?
Not necessarily Oakley Percol, that's from Colonial.
Colonial Road.
Okay.
So that's the concept plan right there, so it's actually two of the properties you don't have anything, they're not planning on putting anything on, or how's that?
Well, I mean, that's needed. Therein lies the rationale for variance on.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Any other member of the audience would like to speak in favor or against? Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with revised conditions of file R Z twenty-five oh seven oh two. Change of conditions to allow additional time for conditional use for single-family residential use for the properties at three oh three, three oh five, three oh seven, three oh nine, and three eleven, South Bel Air Road, and one oh two Colonial Road, with the following revised conditions. Number one, conditional use for single-family residential shall be in place for an additional twelve months from the date of approval by the Board of Commissioners. If commercial development has not commenced on the subject properties within twelve months for the approval of the request, the Board of Commissioners shall initiate a rezoning of any of the subject properties that have not commenced commercial development back to the original R two, single-family residential zoning classification.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor of this? Raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero. File H one C four. This is a variance to section ninety-nine eight. Will?
Lieutenant Sheriff's Request for a variance through Southern South Bel Air Road. Currently zoned CC, Community Commercial, to reduce front building setback for existing structure. This is part of the rezoning we just discussed, or the change of conditions we discussed, excuse me. There's a case in the property, based in the middle of the block. And the current zoning is CC, Community Commercial. The aerial view of the site, and the plat, and the site itself, and the original concept plan. Again, this is the one that we were shown a year ago. This shows how all the properties may be developed with the site, or in the future, or hopefully very soon. And they have the revised concept plan here. So the issue is, as we can see here, you have a hundred and twenty-five-foot building setback. This house is intended to be reused for some sort of commercial or office development is much, is within that building setback. Again, this is pretty common along Bel Air Road. We've done many of these when you have a house that gets basically reused as commercial or as professional or commercial. So again, pretty common. Bel Air Road, when these were built, was a smaller road than it is now. Down arterial, has a large setback off of it. So again, very common thing to have along this corridor. Due to that, staff recommends approval of condition. Again, this is a clarification, the direction of front setback only applies to existing structure. If he were to redevelop the site, knock down that building, he can't use the existing, or the existing setback that's in place, has to use one twenty-five. That's what that does. That includes staff recommendation.
Thank you. The owner or applicant like to come forward and add anything? Okay. Any other member of the audience would like to speak in favor or against? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with condition of file VA twenty-five oh seven oh one, variance to reduce the front building setback at three oh seven South Bel Air Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero. H one C five, rezoning from R one to S one. Danielle?
Yes, sir. This is a rezoning at location forty-nine thirty-three Hereford Farm Road on one point eight acres. The current zoning is R one, single-family residential, and the existing use is a personal care home for six residents. Request to S one special is to increase the number of residents to seven. Here's the location on the north side of Hereford Farm Road. This is the zoning map, which shows R one, R one A, R two, and P U D, which are a single-family homes. This is the aerial of the property. The current business there is Lily of the Valley Adult Care Solutions, and it opened in November of twenty twenty-one, so that allows a maximum of six residents. The business owner must reside on the property, and obviously, any staff that they use. And their request is to add one more residence to that to make it seven. These are some site photographs. You can see that there's a security gate on the front, and then the driveway up to the house, which is residential in nature, and it's in with the character of the area. These are the plats of the property. You've got the plot of the lot, and then there is a widening project that's starting up soon, and the plat on the right shows the right-of-way acquisition for this property. The building layout, the house is going to stay as it is. It doesn't need any additions or any additional work. There is room for an extra residence if that gets approved. The addition of another residence does class that as a certified group home, and that would require upgrades to fire codes and also a new certificate of occupancy by building standards, which is what the applicant is requesting. The reasoning given for the additional resident is to, for the applicant to change the billing method to be able to bill Medicare directly. Currently, they can't do that and have to use a third-party agency for that. The request is for to, for the S one zoning and to improve the financial efficiency of the business and to be able to invest into that business as well. Staff feel that using the billing method is not really a viable justification for this zoning change. The future development map shows this location in the neighborhood's area, which typically is single-family residential. Some of the civic uses allowed in that area could be libraries, schools, daycares, churches, that sort of use. It is an existing house that's going to stay as it is, but with the reasoning for the billing method, the staff is recommending disapproval.
Would the owner or applicant Lily of the Valley Adult Care Solutions LLC or applicant Dr. Levi McCullough like to add anything? Please come forward and state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Levy McCullough. I hope my voice, I'll try to raise it up. So I respectfully submit this justification, my support of my application to rezon the above referenced property from R one, S one, with the request to increase the number of residents allowed at our personal care home from six to seven. I earnestly ask the planning commission or the division and the commissioners to recommend approval of this request, which is vital to our continued mission of providing high-quality, safe, and dignified care to individuals. Our personal care home currently serves six residents, offering a supportive, licensed, and secure environment. The demand for such services rising in Columbia County, and this request to increase capacity by just one resident helps meet that growing need without altering the home's residential nature or character. In terms of safety and security and facility features, we take safety very important. I mean, the safety of our residents is our topmost priority. The property is enclosed by metal fencing with a secure gate, and the facility is equipped with video surveillance in all public areas. All access points, including windows and doors, are secured and monitored, ensuring both resident safety and neighborhood peace of mind. The home is spacious enough to accommodate up to ten residents, through informal discussions with the fire, the fire marshals, without requiring any modifications or expansions to the current structure. Our request for seven residents is well within the capacity, and we maintain generous living space per person in line with the state's standards and best practices. And you know, we are all Christians here. We are asking for one, just an increase of one, to help us do our job properly. You know, for people that are Christians, you know, when one sinner becomes full heaven just for that one person. Story of the parable of those lost sheep. One is lost, just that particular one that is lost, they go out to loss. So it's a big deal for us even to have this approval if we can. So in terms of compliance, our facility is licensed and regulated by the Georgia Department of Community Health. We staff the home in compliance with state regulations, providing twenty-four-hour care and support by trained personnel. We have consistently passed inspections and remain committed to exceeding the standards for personal care homes. The facility has been operating without incidents and complaint and continues to blend seamlessly into the residential character of the neighborhood. We maintain a respectful and quiet environment and remain dedicated to being good neighbors. Because of how billing is done, or is regulated by the Georgia Department of Community Health, I'm not permitted to bill directly for services provided. I'm required to use a third-party provider to process my billing, which significantly affects my bottom line and limits our operational flexibility. Increasing the number of residents to seven will help offset these financial constraints and allow us to continue offering quality care without compromising our standards or burdening taxpayers. And in terms of commitment to collaboration, if there are any specific requests from the planning division or the community, I welcome the opportunity to address them openly and constructively. My goal is to operate transparently and collaboratively in service to those in our area. In closing, I respectfully urge the Planning Services Division and Columbia County Board of Commissioners to recommend approval of this rezoning request from R one to S one and the increase in residential capacity to seven. So this modest change will have a meaningful impact for our, for one additional family while maintaining the safety, integrity, and character of the property and the surrounding community. So thank you very much for your thoughtful consideration and coordinated dedication to serving the people of Columbia County. Thank you.
Thank you. We have any questions?
So how many do you have right now? Six? How many residents?
I have six residents right now. Out six.
Have you tried to add more than six before?
I cannot do that because it was a special permission to operate just for, have to be, I live there.
So you're just asking for one more?
I'm asking for one more, and then that will give me, probably the group home. That will enable me then to do other things, which, and the people love us, wonderful environment. Love our neighbors.
So you add additions on to the house to get that one more?
We are not adding, making any changes to the structure. The structure currently can house about ten people. But because we're residential, we're allowed only six. We have a good reputation, always been full, kept, had, and led, that was a hundred, died last year. Could still walk, everything on our own. That was a delight to look at.
Do you have any issues with the billing now, currently?
Currently, I have to use a third-party. And so when the third-party does the billing for you, are those that are on Medicaid, you only get about a third of the, of the cost. So you have to pay my workers, all those things, so it affects.
So one more person gets you out of having to pay a third-party?
That's right.
Basically what it boils down to?
Because it will change my status, then I can, that will help a lot. Then I won't miss those, I'll be benefiting myself.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other member of the audience would like to speak in favor or against?
I'd like to speak.
Come forward and speak your name and address for the record, please.
Frank Pete's, I'm at eight oh two Rollo Domino Circle, right next to it in Allen Farms. And since Dr. McCullough has been there, upgraded the property. It stays pristine, trees, landscaping. He added that fencing, which is very nice, upgraded fencing. Good neighbor, talk, share things sometimes. No problem. I never hear anybody there. Matter of fact, I don't think I've ever seen a resident the whole time. I've been there thirteen years. That's all I wanted to add.
Any questions? Thank you. Any other member of the audience would like to speak, behalf or against? I get a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend disapproval of R Z two-five oh seven oh three rezoning from R one to S one, forty-nine thirty-three.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero. H one C six, R Z twenty-five oh seven oh four, conditional use of retail package sale of distilled spirits off of premise consumption. Will?
Lieutenant Sheriff's Request for conditional use. I will call it a liquor store. I don't want to keep that long title over and over again. At one oh two South Bel Air Road, at three point, it's on three point oh four acres. Currently zoned C two and C C. It shows the location of the property in the intersection of South Old Bel Air and Columbia Road. And again, the current zoning is split zone, C two and C C. The south, you have some property zoned A R. The north, property zones, R two for Orford Hill. Across the street, you have some C two for a gas station, R one for the remainder of all of that. There's the aerial view of the site, and the existing site, and the plat of the property, and the proposed concept plan. So we saw this about a year ago. They were looking to rezon it for, yeah, the conditional use for a liquor store, but you also had a rezoning, to rezon basically everything here, whoop, it's not drawn the way I want it to, but basically, all of that will be rezoned to C two. Staff was not really in favor of the C two, but the, as we'll see in a moment, liquor store, the conditional use itself, it works overall. It was turned down by the Board of Commissioners, so they're now back, basically a year later, looking to only do the conditional use for the liquor store. What you see here is the proposed building is about fifty thousand square feet. Liquor store will be here, here, about eleven thousand square feet in. Liquor store will be here, here, about 11,000 square feet in size, and you have another 4,000 square feet over on this side that will be for retail development, that sort of thing. There is a drive-through located here on this plan. That would be on the passenger side if we're coming in the way it shows. They might revise that over time, but there is an allowance within the initial use to have a drive-through within or for a liquor store. So one of the, the primary thing with a liquor store is going to be distances from other, other package stores, other uses, such as church buildings, school buildings, county parks and playgrounds, I call it treatment facilities. This shows the location here for the liquor stores that are in the area. Again, the closest one is Golden Package, it's about 1.72 miles away, give or take. That requirement is one mile, so it does meet that requirement. The other uses they were looking at, they did a survey for that. So we have, to the west, we're over 4,000 feet away from Santa Teresa Villacastel Church. Again, that requirement's 1,000 feet. Then to the opposite direction, going east, 6,000 feet, Trinity Baptist Church. For the parks, it's 1,000 feet. Again, 6,000 feet to Blanchard Park. 4.2 miles to Treatment Center of Augusta, again, that's a thousand-foot limit, so meets it by quite a bit. And also 4.6 miles to Columbia County Library, again, meets it by a lot. Then the closest thing is your Savannah River Academy, which is the south, at 2,155. They're meeting all of the distance requirements that are in place per the ordinance. This shows future development map. Again, this area is intended to be neighborhoods. Now, thing to remember is that this property here, that's zone C2, is zoned in 1977, and this one, I believe, in 19, this one was in 1998. So they've been zoned for quite a while. They are not, they don't meet the current, the current future development map for the county. So again, if you came in like we happened last time and asked to expand that zoning to have more C2, we're not going to be in favor of it. However, because it is just adding a use, a conditional use, we see no issues with, from a future, future development standpoint. There is a condition proposed on this, requiring county sewer, our condition of county sewer to be required for the liquor store. Again, staff recommends approval with condition of the request.
Thank you, Will. The owner applicant would like to add anything additional?
Malley is here as well. Don't have anything else to add, but here for any questions, happy to answer anything. Apologies, we filed the application, I'm not sure why my name wasn't attached, but I, we heard it, I spoke to Lindsay this morning. Potential I wasn't trying to.
It is, I just, I would rather not pronounce that.
I understand.
Rava Sandvi?
It's the names of his children.
Okay. Rava and Sandvi LLC, okay.
My client, Mr. Patel, is a resident here in Columbia County. He operates the top-notch liquor store that's in Richmond County presently, and he's trying to get back in to operate in Columbia County where he lives, he wants to. So certainly request the approval that's been. Questions or anything else?
What are the plans for the other tenants?
Presently, we're in talks with a coffee shop and a restaurant, but it's, I'll be frank with you, they haven't made it very far, but we, that's the intention is, is those types of uses, if not anybody we're already talking to now, certainly keeping with that spirit.
Questions? It'll be just three tenants?
Yes, sir. 11,000 square foot and then 1,500 each.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Any other member of the audience would like to speak in favor or against? And come forward and to the podium, speak your name and address, please.
Jenkins. I live at 4717 Brookwood Drive. I was the one that spoke before. Plan has changed again. Like. Just yesterday, our accident right at the intersection of where all this is proposed. I've lived out here when Bel Air Road was still too lane. I am a retired teacher. I really hope all the. For sure. That from front to back. Building for success by putting a liquor store right next to a residential area. I drove around and this really, Jonathan Crawford has sons all over here. There. That green space has been privacy, quiet, and if they cut down all those trees, it's going to absolutely break our neighborhood so much. It's going to bother the privacy, the noise, and those houses on Brookwood Lanes are going to be exposed, and especially our swimming pool. Just since the last time we met. My neighborhood is. Four people have had guns stolen from their cars, me being one of them. I just cannot fathom the thought of putting a liquor store on that corner and squeezing all that in. I don't know how in the world they're going to get all that in there and not come, come completely back into Brookwood townhomes. There's an old house in there. Been in there for years. I really don't want it to happen again. The night I discovered my gun had been stolen from my car, it was my dad's. I'm a retired school teacher. I taught 28 years. I've taught in neighborhoods. Ours has been struggling for years. Pro within, people take care of their yards. Whenever one of those units comes up, people see dollar signs on it, rather than a community where people, we used to know everyone. We don't now because those units are being rented out as fast as they are bought. This young man came to my house at 11 o'clock at night when I discovered that my gun was missing. It happened so quickly, I was unloading my car. Same thing has happened to the other four people on my street and area and the street over. The man over on the other neighborhood shot ever stealing his gun. He missed. We don't need this liquor store here as of. Have plenty. How many more do we need? This young man came to my house about a week or. Name on this slip? Kevin White. This young man is a product of this school. He knows who I'm talking about. Kevin White is from this county. He went to school. I cried like everybody else. We lost one of our best. I would put this sheriff's department against any, and I, my hometown Asheville, talk about destruction. I'm here because I have running water and electricity. My home up there hit by a tornado, and my family's business property washed away. It looked like tech, but thank you for praying. Well. You know what happened? I saw this young man, he, on when they videoed Deputy Sykes's service, he came in his unit. These police officers are America's best to me out here. He was patrolling our neighborhood that night. There's not any time when they haven't been needed, that these officers haven't been polite, they are concerned, and they care what's happening in our neighborhood. This county, I have three college degrees, I've taught 28 years, I don't want to repeat myself. But everybody up here, I hope you will read what's put out here, all the programs for the children, everything from homeless children to children who is called fit. It's amazing. And if you want to be impressed with numbers, this page, there are rounding school systems that would, these numbers in their frames, 93.4% graduation rate. Are you really building for success when you allow a liquor store next to a residential area with retired people, military people, and people that work and people who don't want to move? Going to force a lot of people to leave that neighborhood. Some already are leaving. And I really hate to see that happen because of alcohol. And I, I think you missed one. One, this 1.7 package store. Other one up in that area next to the. Between there and this intersection here. There's one there next to the laundromat. Oriental Lady Islands. There is another one.
Ma'am, you're not, you're not, I don't want to interrupt, but you're not, you're not just against the liquor store, you're against the whole development of that corner.
I know it's already been zoned, but I am so scared of having a liquor store within walking distance and it right next to our swimming pool. We have met, I have been there since 96. That swimming pool has been maintained, it's a money pit. Our homeowners do now average out $45 a month to keep everything mowed and neat. We have a very active management company, the AMP, B-More, she notifies people of this, and I really hate to see it start going downhill.
So your main disapproval was the liquor store?
Yes.
Not so much as the development?
I don't know how they're going to be able to squeeze all that in, and I hope the people over in Maple Creek know about this because I don't think they do. Because that's going to come right up against their property as well. And when they start cutting down those trees, those trees have served as a buffer zone, that road is so noisy, the ambulances and, you know, I know Columbia County's grown, I've been here since 76, on and off, busily. And it's like, those trees give us privacy, it helps keep our values of our homes, but you put that liquor store, I drove and I don't see one liquor store down near a residential area. They're all in strip malls and over at Westlake, that's surrounded by trees. The nearest one over there, try and put this over there and see what those people will do. There was a follow-up. We all know about this young man. He's local, he's from Columbia County. They did a follow-up. My gun would ever come. That deputy is Deputy Nelson. These officers mean so much to everybody in there and especially me. They are the best. This county has the best schools and the best police force. My town, Asheville, I grew up there, eight generations of my family have lived up there. There's 100 vacancies in that police department. Out here, and it's what I call crap zoning. My family had rental property and my dad's property. Seen the pictures of Texas, Winona River, gone. It was there 60 years. So I'm down here because I have so much to deal with up there. Right now, there's a cannabis store located right next to a bakery, Ball New Smokes, if you're from here, that relocated right next to a bakery that specializes in children's birthday cakes. Explain those little children, what cannibalism and all that gummy stuff. I've seen it by neighborhood. I don't want to ramble.
Okay.
Right next to Columbia County. Pedal Pub. My hometown tried that. Cars ran into it, people fell off of it. I just really think we have enough liquor stores and enough crap zoning that it's going to really affect the value of our property in there. Those, there are people who don't want to move and people that can't move, and people that are tired, and we're losing some good.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry, would you like to come forward? I didn't see you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. Thank you very much for your time this evening. My name is Haley Etzel. I live at 405 Riley Lane in Grove Town. I live less than a mile and a half from the proposed development, and I'd like to speak in favor of the zoning and the proposed development. If we want to attract young families to Columbia County to grow, I think we need to grow our businesses. I've known the applicant for several years, done business with him at his business in Richmond County, patronized his business in Richmond County. It's a very well-run business, it's well-lit, it's adequately staffed, it's a state, safe shopping experience. I know he's lived in Columbia County for over a decade and his two children attend school here, so he would like to bring his business and help grow the revenue tax base in Columbia County as a way to support and give back to the community. Further, I believe that this development will, I support it creating jobs during construction and after the opening. I spoke about broadening the tax base, generating revenue for schools, roads, projects, without burdening the residents of the county. And as well, I'd like to add the stoplight that was added at that intersection two years ago has greatly helped the traffic situation there. I drive that intersection multiple times a day, and I think it is conducive to the additional traffic that will come from this development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have any questions? Any other member of the audience would like to speak in favor or against? Come forward, please. State your name and address for the record.
I'm Cynthia Trapp. I live at 4693 Brookwood Lane, and I'm against it. I think that where the intersection is, where they'll be coming in and out of, on South Arrow Bell Road, trying to go left, trying to go right, trying to get through there, drive through the liquor store. It's something about helping. Get back without getting a liquor store. We have children, we have ball fields, we have, we have schools. I work for the school system. I'm very upset with the thought of at five o'clock in the afternoon, traffic there. She must not go by there at five o'clock because even with the traffic light, hard to get in. I know that, but. Where you have to go in it, it'll be on South Bell Air Road. It is so close to that intersection, it will be a nightmare. We already have Gas Pro that has beer and wine and all that there, right across the street. We don't need any more. Leave.
Thank you.
I mean, y'all do know that something eventually, as far as.
It's fine. I mean, I know.
Partial.
Yeah.
Okay.
But have you been out there?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I've lived in Columbia County all my life, I know.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, have you been out there to look at where it's at?
Uh huh.
And where they'll be coming, where it'll be going?
Right. It's got a rear exit.
Egress, going in and, yes.
Right.
It will be there, and it's right before the light and right before the.
But whether a liquor store is there or not, it's probably going to eventually be a strip-type shopping center. Might be with restaurants or, you know, wherever else type retail.
I just think.
You're basically addressing the traffic component, right?
Yes.
So he's basically addressing the traffic component that you're bringing up as.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's been commercial land for a long time, so it's eventually something's going to be there.
Yeah.
So the main objection is just a liquor store, right?
Right. The liquor store, the traffic, it will, and the type of clientele that it will bring.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the audience would like to speak in favor or against? State your name and address, and I'm going to.
Rosemary Bradley.
I'm going to give you three minutes, please.
Rosemary Bradley, 132 Maple Creek Drive. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate everybody else, too. My concern, I know it meets all of those specifications about distance and everything, but I just don't think we need a liquor store there. The traffic, since the light was put up, we needed the light, thank you for that. But the traffic coming around Old Bel Air, Oakley Percol to get to that red light is, I can't even guesstimate how many extra vehicles come through there a day because of that. We needed it, but we do not need another liquor store in Columbia. There's too many children in schools, the church, right there in close proximity. Please, please don't let us have a liquor store there on that corner. I appreciate you.
So you're okay with anything else going, just not a liquor store?
Well, if, when it comes up, I'll, I'll make my decision then. But the liquor store, I think, is wrong for all those children and all the neighbors. I think, is wrong for all those children and all the neighbors and the traffic.
Could Steph bring up the picture of the liquor store? Liquor stores nearby?
We, we have plenty.
So Golden Package is 1.7 miles away, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Liquor land is up on Lewis...
The thing to think about with this is that because of this one-mile separation, I mean, you can see here where they overlap a ton over here, if you want to open up a liquor store in Columbia County, you gotta go find somewhere where you don't have this issue. And that's the thing, is it forces, forces it into certain parts of the county essentially. And this is one that, it meets all the requirements, so there is some of that to it.
I, I realize it does meet all the requirements, but I don't think we need it on that corner. And I understand now that you can even have it delivered, that somebody delivered. Thank you for your...
Thank you.
How much, how much housing's in the area besides the Brookwood?
Like rooftops?
Yeah.
A lot?
Lot.
Yeah, got Maple Creek too.
Yeah. All of Maple Creek.
Yep.
Got Brookwood back here.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, we don't usually have this happen, so they're, basically both sides are allowed 10 minutes apiece. The folks four have only used basically three minutes of their time. If they want to rebut or do anything, I would suggest allowing them to do that.
Okay, thank you for that, Will.
Thanks for the extra time, I was trying to keep it short and sweet because nobody wants to listen to me ramble. I would like to add that the shopping experience at Golden Package locally, which is the closest, is not one that I would consider safe, it's not well-staffed, there's incidents there frequently. I avoid it like the plague because I don't feel safe shopping there as a female if I'm alone after dark. So, I think a newer development with, like I said, better lighting, that's a safer environment is needed in our area. Furthermore, I'm a working mother with children, and liquor stores are heavily regulated, you know, drinking is heavily regulated, my children are plenty safe, regardless of whether I go to have a liquor store down the street or not, so, that's all.
I'm curious, why this location? Why did y'all concentrate on this location as far as putting the liquor store?
What, did I?
No, I mean, whoever's doing it, yes, I'll answer that.
Cause of the failing regulations of the distance.
That's exactly it, Your Honor, it's been, oh, I'm saying, Your Honor, I'm sorry, that's exactly it.
Don't call him that.
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's, this is exactly where the regulation would leave us on the next available commercial spot, it's one that we now own, of course, we do own the dirt, but it's, it is one that was picked because it did meet all these requirements, the requirements set by the county, the requires that have been recently revised by the county, and so if, you know, the requirements are all met and we're all here for it, that's exactly why this place was chosen. I mean, it's obviously, it's in a desirable area, it's on Columbia Road, there's plenty of traffic for any commercial development, let alone being a liquor store, but it, it is prime commercial property, which there's not much of in Columbia County, certainly not much that's undeveloped, and so that's exactly why we're here, is to petition this body and then ultimately the chairman to get approval so that we can operate this business, and this is the business we operate in. And so it's, it checks all boxes for us, it checks all boxes for the county, and so we certainly would recommend that we follow staff approval, and that's what we'll be seeking tonight.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Yes, three minutes, please. State your name and address.
My name is David Tenison, I live at 4630 Brookwood Lane, and I'm also the president of the Brookwood Community HOA. And we literally have a group of kids every morning and every afternoon getting off their school bus, less than 50 yards from where that liquor store will be, and I know you can see a drunk driver anywhere, but, you know, when they're standing out there by the road, we don't necessarily want people flying up the road, driving to the liquor store to get more alcohol, when our kids are standing out there on, on the end of the street waiting on the school bus. That's the main thing. I represent 118 units there, and they, nobody in the community cares for having a liquor store there. We're open to any other business, but that's just not something we're wanting right outside our community.
So y'all basically discussed this with everybody in the homeowners association?
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And that's it, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, I'll close the public participation, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend disapproval of RZ 250704, conditional use for retail package sale at the Steel Spirits for off premise consumption at 102 South Bel Air Road.
Got a motion? I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. On the floor, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next on file, H1C7, Varianz 25-07-02, variance to section 90-53. Daniel?
Yes, so this is a request for a variance to section 90-53, which is the list of lot and structure requirements related to building setbacks at 303 Crestview Drive. And this shows the location of the property off Old Ferry Road, and it is currently zoned R3, single-family residential, as are all of the surrounding properties. This shows the aerial of the site, we are dealing with this structure, which we'll see in a moment, was destroyed by the hurricane, so it's no longer there. The applicant would like to replace that structure in the same location, and you can see from the aerial, it is quite close to the property line as it was constructed. So here you can see the post-hurricane aerial with that carport no longer in place. That carport has been there, per the applicant, about 17 years, and that tracks, it shows up on the aerials about 2010, along with the garage building behind it. Both of those are three feet and change from the property line, a normal building setback in this location would be 10 feet, so it is well within that setback, but it has been in place for quite a while with no known issues. And the applicant, in this case, actually does own the adjacent property, obviously that's not necessarily a long-term scenario, but at this time, he is basically the most impacted property owner by this request. And this shows a photograph of the existing site, and the concept plan, which shows the proposed location of the carport, again, putting it back in the same location that it has been, three feet and 10 inches or so off of the property line there on the side. And Steph is recommending approval of this request.
The owner applicant Perry Burton would like to add anything additional? Do we have any questions?
I have none.
Any other member of the audience would like to speak in favor or against? I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of VA 250702, variance to reduce the side setback to three feet for the property at 303 Crestview Drive.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Do we have any legal matters? I don't see Mr. Attorney Driver here tonight. Any other staff commissioner comments? I get a motion for adjournment?
Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor, raise your right hand, we're adjourned.